Will the Committee of the Whole Finance for Wednesday, November 5th, 2025, please come to order. Will the Clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Hines? Oh, sorry. Parrish, Renee C., Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Yurichak?
Here.
And Williams?
Here. You've all had the opportunity to review the minutes for the Committee of the Whole for October 21st, 2025. May have a motion to approve them.
Who makes that motion?
Was there a second? Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The minutes for the Committee of the Whole for October 21st, 2025, have been approved. Tonight, we're going to go into an executive session. I had, before we start, just for the record, I had our auditor give a brief statement and the settlements of the insurance and legal fees for our lawsuits to date. Ms. Fix, would you like to go over that report?
Yes, I can do that.
And by the way, this is all public record. It's everything that we can say, we will report.
Mr. Proudford provided the summary of the settlements. Basically, what would you like me to cover?
The settlement amount, the city portion that we've paid.
Okay.
And then the insurance portion that's paid, and also the legal fees.
In total, or the details?
Break it down per lawsuit, and there's something that can't be talked about.
Okay.
Because of its, the privacy of it, you know, the nature of its privacy.
Well, okay. Paradise Homes, there was a settlement of $170,568. The city's portion was $120,568. Insurance-
Again, Kathy, I'm sorry, I couldn't hear you, Ted.
You can't hear me?
I couldn't hear you.
There you go.
Okay, sorry.
Okay, oh, I'm sorry.
Paradise Homes, the settlement amount was $170,568. The city's portion was $120,568. And insurance covered $50,000 of that.
Can I ask, I mean, I'm just, because I don't, so what was that for? What was it in regards to? Because you're-
I'll let the law-
I mean, just a one-liner, I'm just trying to figure out-
Yeah, so Paradise Homes, there was a claim over on Lincoln Place. That claim in and of itself, they had maintained, or they had said that we had not maintained that small roadway. It had been undedicated years ago. The portion of it, the front portion, wasn't though. So we were supposed to kind of upkeep that, do that. So we ended up, as part of the settlement, we purchased the parcels that were around there by the plaintiff, and then that's, that's what brought about the settlement there.
Were you on that land now?
Correct. I believe it was four parcels.
We had four parcels.
Yeah. So now that's city property.
Yes. The second was Stony Hill Development. The settlement amount was $325,000. The city's portion was $95,000. And the insurance paid $230,000.
What was that for?
And-
Only because I wasn't here, I'm just trying to-
That's okay. There was a development, there was some disagreement on some testing that was supposed to be done. It delayed the development getting done, so they had sued us on, in regards to that. So that's the basis of that lawsuit.
Frank and Patricia Kleins, the settlement amount was $175,000. Insurance paid all of that. So the city's portion on those three was $215,568. And then there, there were some legal fees we paid in '24 and '25 for Stony Hill Developments, just over $76,000. And then the airport hangar, legal fees we've paid are almost $36,000. For, if you add those legal fees to the city's portion of those settlements, we're at $327,574 in '24, and year-to-date, '25.
That last one, what was that for? I kind of, you kind of got it, I was just, the final one where the insurance paid-
The last one that she had spoken about, that was a home that was outside of the city, it was in the township. Their claim was that we had approved some engineering work. There was some runoff, some spillage, some-
So these are developments?
Yeah.
That's what I was trying to get, okay.
Thank you, Ms. Fix.
You're welcome.
Yeah, I'm trying to find my cheat sheet. Mr. President, I move that we hold an executive session for a conference with the Director of Law concerning disputes involving this public body that are subject to pending or imminent court action.
Second?
Second? Anybody, second? Okay.
Okay. Copley?
Yes.
Parrish?
Yes.
Renee C.?
Yes.
Rosberg?
Yes.
Stugmeyer?
Yes.
Yurichak?
Yes.
Williams?
Thank you. I need to clear the chambers, and as soon as we're finished, I'll invite you back in.
There we go.
All right. Please continue.
Yes, thank you. The first internal note, 25-189, is for $301,661, is for Tolbert and Treese Road. I noticed that the amounts aren't in the titles here. We could amend those and put that in, if you like. It's obvi, the amounts are obviously in the actual ordinance, but if you like, we could amend those for the next reading and put the amount in, in the heading. The second one is 25-190, Water Improvements. And it's $471,855, and it's for 50% of the water distribution and collection vehicles, and water treatment plant valves, pumps, motors, and vehicles, and well rehabilitation. And the third one, 25-191, is for $312,069. And it's for sanitary sewer improvements, and the 50% of the water distribution collection vehicles, and wastewater treatment plant equipment.
Yeah. That would be under Public Service. Any other comments from administration on that? Mr. Stugmeyer?
Number of readings on that?
It was three.
We can go three readings.
Go three, okay. Well, we'll do all three of those to second.
And we can move them all three as one vote.
Correct.
Okay.
Okay.
You'll just have to, okay. Very good. Item number two.
Thank you, Mr. President. This item, for $3,125, is, relates to a door repair done at the administration building for the airport. One of the airport users, in a moment of anger, broke a door out there. He has reimbursed the city $3,000, which would have been the cost for direct replacement of that door. The additional $125, which would be ultimately the portion that we pay, is because the FBO asked for a slightly different door that costs more, they felt it would be better, and I agreed to pay for that, so-
Just enough charge, okay. Airport, public waste. Any questions on that?
You said they've already reimbursed us?
They have.
So there's no need to-
Suspend and call, pay the bill.
That'll be ordinance 25-192.
Item number three on the agenda. The warrant, anybody got to discuss that?
I can speak to that. That is a, just a, for one of the street construction projects we had, we had some work that needed some secondary inspection support, and we have a contract with Quality Control Inspections to do that work, and we had to call them in just to help out for this, this, this brief project, so it was fairly small.
What project was that?
The Street Improvement Project.
No, I mean, which street, or, or just in general?
Just the, I don't, I don't have the exact street.
All right. That'd be Mr. Rosberg. And the ordinance number?
1, 25-193.
Okay. Item number four. Warrant for $10,000.
I can, I can take that, Mr. President. So that $10,000 is the deductible on the 168 Obel Street LLC litigation. So that's a payment to the insurance company for the $10,000 deductible that we have.
Counsel, have questions? Mr. Rosberg, why don't you take that? Call that. Auditor Fix? What would you like us to do on that warrant?
Yes, please.
Spend it?
Obviously, the vendors need to get paid.
Okay.
Thank you.
25-194.
All right. Next one, item five. Who would like to address that?
That's the budget.
Is there appropriation for expenses?
It's the appropriation.
Appropriation budget.
Oh, it is?
Yeah.
Are we to that point yet?
Well, thank you, Mr. President. Typically, during the budget hearings, we present the first reading at the first meeting in November for the budget ordinance, and it typically goes a full three readings, so we're on track with the normal schedule that we've used in the past.
We're still waiting on another meeting?
We are, and that meeting, I think, is on the 24th.
Right. Counsel, it's up to you, what do you, what would you like to do?
No.
No.
Speak up.
I'm not ready. I mean, I'd like to hear more discussions on, we spoke four hours on it the other night, but there's still a lot of budget going, so I don't know that we even want to-
I guess my thought is, is why are we not moving it forward, so that when, we're not going to approve the budget without it going three readings, we can make changes and move it forward, or else we're going to be in a fire drill, like we were last December, trying to coordinate everyone's schedule to get in here and read legislation.
We could have five, four readings on it if something isn't decided.
We'd push it to fourth reading, or whatever, if we weren't to that point. That's my only take on it.
Mr. President, so normally, the budget that was presented, any of the changes that are requested by counsel are worked into a revised budget, and ultimately, that's the budget that's presented to counsel for the vote. So the proposal that you have in front of you is kind of the starting point, but the expectation is that that will be modified based on feedback and instruction from City Council before we present the actual item to be voted on.
Okay, what I'm going to do, I'm going to put this on, and go ahead, and we'll try a reading, and let you decide what you want to do, as individual council members, and what's that?
That'll be 25-195.
Can I ask one question?
Sure.
Since we did make some changes during the Capitol meeting, and also during our first round, has any, will you present those changes to us prior to us having a look at this?
Yeah, so, so the, some of the Capitol items that kind of you saw in that big spreadsheet, I had made those changes before we finalized the budget book. And, for example, there were a couple of changes to economic development budget with regard to the CIC and IDA, those were already taken out. But the Auditor's Office does present all of the reconciling items between the first proposal and the one that you're voting on, so there's a record of that.
That wasn't my question.
Okay.
Okay. My question was, do we get to see what has been taken out? What Kathy gives us, or the Auditor's Office gives us, is a two- or three-page document with its numbers on it.
Well, I can-
I'm asking about the E.J. Young Memorial. I'm asking about the drone that's proposed for the electric department.
Yeah.
That's what I wanted to-
So I can keep track of all of those and present them to counsel prior to-
Dual supply, prior to us being asked to vote on this?
Yes.
Thank you. Let's see, I'm going to assign this to Mr. Parrish.
Is that 195?
That is 195.
And that would be on first reading, if so choose. Okay. Ordinance, our item number six, $39,617.20. It's a supplement appropriation.
I'll take that. That is a payment to our Inspector QCI, who has been involved in the Frontier work. The Frontier Communications work initially was inspected by staff as a result of a lot of the issues on, in construction that many of you know about. We need additional staff support to go out there, which we didn't have, so we needed to bring this third party. They, this is their cost, and this cost is being charged to Frontier for those inspections, so that's what, this is just giving us additional authority to pay QCI.
What are the terms, or timeline, I should say, on that amount? I mean, is it until the project's done, or are we going to have to renew this annually, this inspection service?
That's currently, we just had a discussion with their Vice President today, that's kind of in flux, but this amount has, has, is-
Been built?
Is for the first phase.
Oh, it's been built.
Which is currently going on, and that's all that we're talking about right now, is just this first phase.
But this is totally reversible, reimbursable from Frontier.
They've already paid it. They've already paid it.
Okay. That's very good. That's the explanation I think we needed. Mr. Stugmeyer?
Yeah, we'll take that. Suspend and call.
That'll be 25-196.
Thank you.
And then, item number seven.
For gift cards. This is for our annual employee recognition luncheon. This is an ordinance that comes around every year. We present gift cards for employees who have reached service milestones at 5, 10, 15, 20, et cetera. The ordinance has an amount that it will not exceed, and actually, I do know that it's going to be less than the amount the ordinance states.
Mr. Parrish? Can you read that one?
Be 25-197.
If I could request-
When is it? When's the employee lunches ordered?
And all of those ordered?
I can't, we can't hear you, I'm sorry.
I would request that that be suspended and called, if possible. It takes time to get all of that coordinated.
I would only make one comment. I think back, a few minutes, few meetings back, I said these not-to-exceed resolutions should never be not-to-exceed, because you always end up running that number, so I don't know if there's a way of, I mean, City Council should just approve a number.
The only reason we do a not-to-exceed is because in years past, we have missed a person, and we don't want to have to come back to councils, so it's more of, in the range of about $2,900, I believe, but it's like, well, just to make sure that we don't miss anyone and have to come back. And I can come back and report exactly how much it was.
It's, it's small enough, that's fine.
That'll be 25-197.
Item number eight. Compensation rate for the volunteer fire service.
The wage tables in this ordinance reflect a 3% wage adjustment, which is the 3% that is being adjusted across the city.
Any question?
There are no other changes to that.
No.
The only question I have there is, are we competitive? I mean, where are we at with all that, with other volunteers? I mean, has there been, I assume, we've probably looked into this already?
We look into it a little bit every year, Bob. The chief tends to collect that data. I think right now, we're sitting pretty well in terms of being competitive with volunteer or part-time fire.
We have made some good adjustments the last couple of years to get them where they should be.
Do we have enough volunteers?
No.
We always could use more. But we are constantly getting applicants as well.
Mr. Renee C., in the past, we've been under, you know, the norm, you know, in the communities around us, and we raised that, I believe it was two or three years ago, to try and get it up. So it's competitive, I believe, with other fire departments for volunteer-
I think we talked about this, so the only reason I question is because, that's why I asked the question, of do we have enough volunteers?
No.
Yeah.
But there's other issues that's contributing to that not paid.
Oh, that's right. We talked about that, too.
All right. Councilmember Copley?
No, I can't do that, because my son's on the very-
Oh, yeah, that's right, I'm sorry. Wilson's on that committee.
Mr. Yurichak.
Oh, yeah. Mr. Yurichak, we'll put you to work. Item number nine.
So this is the wage ordinance chart for the, the rest of the non-bargaining employees throughout the city. These wage adjustments, the wage charts reflect a 3% adjustment across the board, which is what we have budgeted into next year, is a 3%.
Well, it's in the budget. Any questions? Mr. Renee C., would you read that one?
Sure. 25-199.
And please, three readings on that. Item number 10.
This is our contract with structured personnel. Every year, we use them specifically anymore for leaf raking. We're in leaf raking season now, when you see the crews out, those are going to be primary, well, in large part, they'll be folks who get from structure on a temporary basis. So I reduced the amount of this contract pretty significantly from years past. We used to use them for flushing of hydrants and yard waste. This year, we actually have a permanent, full-time employee who's collecting yard waste, and we've been making do with using just our staff and sometimes summer students for hydrant flushing, so we're relying on them primarily for raking leaves, so that's the reason why this-
What's your recommended, as far as number of readings?
I'm sorry?
Recommended number of readings?
We can go three, that's fine. This is for next year's contract.
Mr. Parrish, would you take that, please?
Is there any, on that one, is, was there any comparison using current staff versus structural personnel? And I know there might be overtime, but the difference in cost?
It's, they're significantly cheaper to go through structure, and especially when we're in leaf season, we don't have enough people, there would be very little to no crews left to do anything else in the street department.
No tax on overtime. That's what our president said.
That's 25-200.
And then, number 11. Would you like to address that also?
Sure. This is to increase the hourly rate of the playback technicians in WCTV. It has been a few years since we've addressed their wage rates. When I first started, it was at minimum, minimum wage, and it was just stuck at minimum wage, and we eventually moved it up, and I think it went to, you know, 12, and maybe 13. It was, it's been stuck at 1625 for at least three, if not four, years. So we thought it was probably time to move this up and be a little bit more competitive, especially since we do rely on these folks to come and do their jobs. So requesting that it be adjusted to $19 an hour.
And this is still a part-time position?
It's technically part-time. I guess for all intents and purposes, it's part-time. They're really considered to be seasonal, because they don't have a regular schedule.
Okay.
They just come in when they're needed.
Okay.
Yeah, and thank you for answering those questions, but I think we really need to discuss this in public service. I mean, we have a gentleman that does a lot, and we're down to one full-time employee at WCTV, and I think should be some consideration in making him a full-time employee, so let's discuss that in the next public service.
Okay.
Tom? Mr. Stugmeyer?
25-201.
We'll just move that to, move that to second.
Move it to second. And then, item number 12.
Before we move on to item number 12, I just want to make a note that I did receive the wage adjustments from the judge yesterday afternoon, so I will have an ordinance prepared for the next council meeting.
Okay.
Maybe we'll get that.
Thank you. And item number 12.
Item number 12 is a supplemental appropriation request for health insurance claims to hopefully take us through the rest of the year. Lots of discussion went into this. The last, this is the, at least the third year in a row that I have come and asked for a supplemental. I did send out claims information from the past several years. I took a little bit deeper dive into this year, because this year, we are having a very unusual year in reference to high claims weeks. When I first started, seven and a half years ago, I think a typical claims week was maybe $60,000. Every once in a while, I mean, maybe once a year, you would go over six figures. Not the case this year. We've had 16 weeks out of 44 that have been over six figures. Several of them very, very high, 200,000 or more. So, and it's not any, you know, I believe that, Mr. Renee C., you had asked about the cap, which I assume that you mean to adjust the stop-loss threshold. So I did inquire about that, because there's a, there's a formula that's used to determine the stop-loss rate at each threshold, and that's determined by a lot of different factors, including, you know, who the client is, the, the industry that you're in, et cetera, how many employees, and the risk. I was told that just decreasing by $25,000, we're at 150 per person cap, that's the specific stop-loss, would increase our, our rate, you know, our premium just for stop-loss by about $150, or $150,000, excuse me. And I think I had given you a different number when I was quoting off the top of my head. But the, we only had four individuals hit the stop-loss threshold in the last plan year, and three of them were at the very last minute. And that increase in that premium cost is not offset, it doesn't justify the amount of claims that we paid up into that 150. We would have been paying more had we had a lower stop-loss threshold. Now, if we go down even lower, that premium, the increase in premium would increase exponentially, because there have been even more people who are eligible to be covered by that stop-loss. So I understand the thought process behind, you know, maybe we need to limit our liability, but the increase in premiums that we pay in that stop-loss insurance increases exponentially, and that's, those are guaranteed costs that we have to pay, whereas the claims, you can say, well, it's somewhat of a gamble, and this year, we're not, it's rolling kind of scary at times, but most years, it doesn't. You know, most years, we're, we're pretty good. This just happens to be one of those years where it's just a little, we've just had a lot of individualized things happen throughout the year, none of which can be predicted. So in order to cover our costs, after some discussion with finance and administration, we're doing, we put together what we thought was going to be, based on the past several years of claims, and how many claims have come in, in the last three months of the year, which tend to be higher than what the rest of the year is, because people are meeting their deductibles and trying to get all of their things in before the, the new year starts. Getting a number together that wasn't outlandish, but also, we thought, could possibly get us to the end of the year. So that's where we came up with the $772,648. And those will come from, funded from the different departments into the 720.
So is that to get the, so is that to get the actual claims paid, or is that to get the reserve at a higher number?
For this year, it's to pay the claims. That's what this is for.
So we did not have-
It's building the reserve, so we have the reserve to pay the, to justify the appropriations to pay the claims.
So this is-
If that makes sense.
So, so we ran out of reserves, and this is to cover the excess costs?
We have not adjusted the department charges for health insurance reserve in quite a while.
No, that's going to be my second question. I'm just worried about this approach. So this, so we actually, the reserve, we didn't have enough reserves, and this will cover the cost you're estimating for the end of the year?
Yes.
And then, you sent me an email, which shows what our average has been over the last 10 years, and I was trying to, I was trying to figure that out. What are, what have we paid out every year for the last 10 years?
Well-
What's, what's been the city's responsibility, so we can determine what the reserve should be for next year?
These are exactly what we've paid out. Now, the claims, I actually printed the email out to you that I sent. You know, by year, I have health insurance claims, that's, those are the actual claims that I sent, that are, that we have paid out in that first column. In the second column, we pay a stop-loss premium, that's paid monthly. Third column, we also pay administration for Mutual of Omaha, or who, not Mutual of Omaha, Omaha.
So the first column, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, the first column are claims, yes.
And, and what was the total, what's the average total for those 10 years?
The average?
Yeah, just estimate.
$3 million, give or take?
Over 10 years.
Over 10 years, about $3-
So about $300,000.
Third column, we also pay administration for Mutual of Omaha, or who, not Mutual of Omaha, Omaha.
So the first column, that's what I was trying to get at.
Yeah, the first column are claims, yes.
And, and what was the total, what's the average total for those ten years?
The average?
Yeah, just estimate.
Three million, give or take.
Over ten years.
Over ten years, about three million.
So about three hundred thousand a year.
We, we, for a long time, have had the practice of keeping twenty-five percent of expected claims, and that was based on what our renewal quote was.
Yeah, I'm, I'm trying, so at the last meeting, we talked about trying to get, so one of the reasons why the budget number went so high is, I think Matt had mentioned that we were trying to get the reserve to a million. And I, and my question was, well, what have your claims been for the last ten years? Because whatever the average is, that's what you should get in the reserve. That should be your, your best number for reserve.
I, I understand your thought process. We don't necessarily have to have a reserve of what the average is. We need to have twenty-five percent of the average that's left over at the end of the year. So all along, we're collecting enough that we have enough that we could pay the claims as the year goes on. But at the end, having the, not only do we have the resources to pay those claims as we go, but we also have built up excess that we don't need for that given year to carry over into the next year, just as a buffer, just in case we have another year like this.
I totally understand. I guess I'm getting too, and, and I can call you about this. I was just trying to determine what the, that report you sent me appears that a million-dollar reserve is too high, but we'll talk about that.
Oh, okay. Sure.
Any other questions? Mr. Renesi, will you read that one and put it on second reading?
That'll be twenty-five dash two zero two.
Then item number thirteen, who would like to take that?
Yes, I will speak to that, Mr. Williams. I think it was mentioned at the last meeting by Mr. Hiscok that the, there's a transfer ordinance and a supplemental appropriation for the two point one million for the remediation grant to spend that money. And I was questioning whether a, a transfer is permanent, so an advance is a temporary use of resources until that grant money comes in. And I believe that the advance is more appropriate than the transfer that was on the agenda. So I'm requesting that we remove the transfer and the supplemental, the first supplemental. With an advance, we won't need that supplemental. So, so again, this is to advance the money from the general fund to cover until those grant dollars come in next year. I'm, I'm not sure, I don't think we even have, have a grant document yet. But I know Matt received authorization to start working on going up.
The, the, yeah, the bid, the bid has been posted, so it's on the website now for people to bid on that remediation project.
So when the money comes in, you're just putting it back in the general fund?
When, I'm sorry?
When the money, because it's advanced, when the money comes in, you're just going to put it back in the general fund?
Yes, yes.
So it's really not, we're not authorizing expenditure, we're just authorizing, as you said, in the.
A use of cash between the funds, yes.
Order to fix, how many readings can we go?
Um, hmm.
Do we go to a second reading then you can figure it out from there?
Well, I guess it depends on the.
Bid opening is December first, if that helps you.
Okay.
So the contract would likely be signed in, you know, mid-December.
We could, we probably won't need to reimburse any services. I think we're okay, two readings.
Two readings?
Yeah.
Okay. Mr. Renesi, will you read that, please?
That's fine.
That'll be twenty-five dash two zero three.
There was one of the other legislations that we need to remove?
Yes, I made Julie aware of the two ordinance numbers that would need to remove. They're twenty-five one eighty-two and twenty-five one eighty-three.
Okay, that takes us to the agenda for the, for regular council. We have a resolution, twenty-five ten. Mr. Renesi, will you sponsor that?
I was just going to move that to second reading.
It's on second, anyone move to third?
Third reading, I'm sorry.
Okay. Resolution twenty-five eleven, same way, we'll move that to third.
That's fine.
Can we have just a quick discussion on twenty-five dash eleven? So I'm still kind of unclear, I mean, I think we need to determine what the next steps are on that. You know, I do think that the communication lines are open, and it's been stated that that resolution was, was to get numbers. And although I feel that maybe we haven't got the exact numbers we're asking for in the format, we are moving in that direction. So, you know, personally, I think that we're going to get through it. So I have two questions. One, what is the next step? And then I guess the other one isn't a question, it's a comment, is I think we should table that because we are moving in the right direction inward. Exactly what you wanted to happen is happening for that resolution. That's just my.
Mr. Raci, Renesi, you're the sponsor on that. What would you like?
I mean, again, I, it's almost like just taking the third reading. This, it's just, I, if we would have got, in my opinion, if we would have got specific answers that, that we ask, I would have moved to table this, but I think we still have open questions, and I think we're getting there. So I think as long as the community realizes we're working toward getting those answers, going to a third reading, I mean, again, it's up to council. I'll, I'll move it to third reading, and if, if it gets voted no, then we can vote to remove it.
Okay. So can we discuss what, what next steps are to, I mean, what's the best way to move forward so that we can get answers to this? Is it individual meetings? Is it another shot at providing the information in the format that, you know?
You know what, I would suggest, there are a couple people that still have unanswered questions, and at least those people should be in the room together. Now, the problem is, if you put three, no.
We can do a work session.
Yeah, just do another work session.
Yeah, we can do a work session for that.
Makes sense.
As a smaller group.
So everyone can hear the answers. Address the questions. Don't, don't just address a spreadsheet, address the questions that's been presented.
Administration, okay with that? Having a work session?
I am.
Okay.
But, but I think, my comment is, is I think we're going to come to the next work session, and we're going to work through something, I, I would be all for a work session if there's a meeting prior to that with some key individuals to make sure that the information coming forward with the work session, so we're not solving the problem in the work session.
So I think it'd be similar, go ahead.
You could have three people meet without violating the sunshine laws, right? As long as.
As long as you call a meeting. And it'd be similar to what we did with the airport resolution, where, you know, whoever wants to attend can, and, you know, go from there.
I'd be more than happy to be a part of that, just throwing it out there.
Okay, we'll, we'll work on that.
I agree, though. There should be a solution, and I appreciate you asking as well. We kind of ended that last meeting and didn't have a next step.
Okay. Well, then, you say you're going to move that to third, and we'll see how that goes. Ordinance number twenty-five one seventy-eight, Mr. Yurczak?
I will move that to third.
Ordinance twenty-five one seventy-nine?
I will amend that and then move it to third.
Where it ordnance twenty-five one eighty, again, that's your sponsor, Mr. Yurczak?
Third.
And the next one, twenty-five one eighty-one?
Third.
I would say, I guess, for council, that the, the SNL lumber company has pulled out that project.
Pulled out, yeah.
Has it pulled out of that project or stopped moving forward or anything else?
Let's, let's remove it from.
Just remove all those, okay.
Both one eighty and one eighty-one.
Mr. Crowefoot, we need a motion for those, or?
Yeah, yeah, you'd need a motion to remove those and then have.
Okay, well, when, when we read them, just, yeah, let's just, a motion to remove. Ordinance one eighty-two, Mr. Rosberg?
Ms. Fisk said we were going to remove that one.
Right.
The next one?
One eighty-three, correct.
One eighty-two and one eighty-three, yeah.
Yes, removing those.
Yes.
Okay.
Okay, that takes us down to the next one, Mr. Rosberg, twenty-five one eighty-four.
We can go to third on that, Ms. Fisk?
Yes, that's the supplemental to spend the money.
Thank you.
Resolution twenty-five oh six, we have multiple sponsors.
I'm going to call a question on that tonight.
Call it. Resolution twenty-five oh seven, multiple sponsors again.
I'm going to call a question on that.
We have twenty-five one sixty-seven, Mr. Copley, our third reading.
Yeah, I'll call a question on that one.
Ordinance twenty-five one sixty-eight?
Call.
And the next one, twenty-five one sixty-nine? And again, that's yours, twenty-five one seventy-one. And one seventy-two?
Call.
One seventy-three?
Call.
Seventy-four?
Call.
We have ordinance one seventy-six, Mr. Yurczak?
Fourth reading.
And ordinance number twenty-five one twenty-eight?
Fifth reading.
Fifth reading. Any other business? Entertained a motion to adjourn?
Remove.
Will the regular meeting of Wadsworth City Council for Wednesday, November fifth, 2025, please come to order? Will you please rise and pledge allegiance to the flag and remain standing for the implication?
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Well, mighty God, who has given us this good land to be our heritage, we acknowledge our dependence upon you for all things, and we thank you for all your blessings, including the right and privilege to govern ourselves in this free land. We pray that you would grant us all wisdom to make good decisions for the future of this community. Through Christ our Lord, we pray, amen. Will the clerk please call the roll?
Copley?
Here.
Heinz?
Here.
Parish?
Here.
Renesi?
Here.
Rosberg?
Here.
Stugmeyer?
Here.
Yurczak?
Here.
Williams?
Here. You all had the opportunity to review the minutes for the regular city council meeting on October twenty-first, 2025. May I have a motion to approve them?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? The meetings for the regular city council meeting on October twenty-first, 2025 are approved. We've now come to the visitors' portion. If there's anyone in the audience who would like to address council, please come to the podium, state your name and address for the record, and keep your comments brief, two to three minutes.
Hello, my name is William Lyren, and I live at two eighty-nine Woodland Avenue in I am here today to speak to you about the resolution requesting that the city administration begin the process of rolling back the city's provision of cable, internet, and fiber services. As a former service director, who in part oversaw the implementations of these services, I feel compelled to speak to city council to express strong opposition to this resolution. Residential, commercial, and industrial customers have benefited from superior communication services in Wadsworth due to the city's commitment to fiber optic systems. The current upgrade to our fiber optic system is crucial to continuing this superior service. Furthermore, ceasing and rolling back the upgrades, as the resolution suggests, we have, we will have a direct negative, negative impact to essential city services. And I have a couple of examples to emphasize this point. Our, our fiber network connects all city computers on a secured, closed network. Without upgrading the fiber network, the city will be forced to seek third-party service to provide operation and maintenance to this service, making it more costly and less secure. Our fiber network provides a SCADA system, which is an acronym for Supervisory Control and Data Acquisition. This service provides constant monitoring and control of electrical infrastructure, electrical substations, wastewater treatment, and water treatment and supply. Without upgrades to our fiber network, the SCADA will require additional financial resources to make it work. Next, our, our upgrade fiber network is being installed on city traffic signals and traffic cameras. City employees can monitor and manage these systems as a vital contribution to public safety for Wadsworth Police and Fire. The upgraded fiber optic system will be delivered to residential customers as fiber-to-the-home internet. This will allow Wadsworth work-from-home residents down, to download and upload speeds far superior to what's available in the private sector. The existing coaxial system in place today cannot deliver internet speeds that suit the demands of work-from-home residents. The fiber upgrades will address this directly. Lately, it is important to note that the growth and continued maintenance of the fiber optic system will support robust future infrastructure demands well into the, into Wadsworth's future. One of the things I am most proud of is the fact that, from my tenure as service director and continuing to today, the city has built a premium importance on maintenance, our public utility programs for residents and commercial businesses. The continued implementation of our city's fiber optic utility supports our city's reputation and identity. Thank you very much. I was told three minutes, and I, hopefully I've made that.
I didn't put the watch on. Out of respect for your service to the city.
There's a lot to be said, and I look forward to working with committees or any council people that have an interest in supporting my position.
Thank you, Mr. Lyren.
Okay, you're very welcome. But I also want to mention that a person, a person, this is not, this is not, it's just a, why am I here? One of the reasons I'm here is, that you don't know about, is that my son, Bill, is out hunting in Montana, and he can't be here. He should be here. He's the one that's most closely involved in recent activities associated with this subject. Thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else that would like to address council? No, seeing none? Is there any correspondence?
Yes, I received three fiscal officer certificates from the city auditor that is required for ordinance number twenty-five dash one eighty-nine through twenty-five dash one ninety-one. I also received free warrants from the assistant city auditor. The first one is regarding Jay's Glass Service LLC in the amount of three thousand one hundred and twenty-five dollars. The second one is regarding Quality Control Inspection Incorporated in the amount of eight thousand eighty-eight dollars and eighty-six cents. And the third one is regarding Selective Deductible Recovery Group in the amount of ten thousand dollars. That's it.
Thank you, thank you. That takes us to committee and commission meeting dates. We have a council budget hearing, actually review, on Monday, November twenty-fourth at four thirty PM in council chambers. Public Service Committee, council member Stugmeyer.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Service Committee will next meet on Tuesday, November the eighteenth, at four PM here in council chambers.
Public Safety Committee, council member Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Public Ways will meet Monday, November tenth, here in council chambers at six PM.
Economic Development and Planning, council member Yurczak.
Thank you, Mr. President. Economic Development and Planning will next meet on Monday, November tenth, at five PM in council chambers.
Committee to hold that tonight. Committee to hold that tonight at 6:00 p.m.? And sorry that we ran over, Commission and Boards, Airport Commission, council member Stugmeyer.
Thank you again, Mr. President. Airport Commission will next meet on Wednesday, November 7th, 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
Stormwater Commission, council member Copley.
Thank you, Mr. President. Next meeting of Stormwater Commission will be on January 13th, 2026, at 5:00 p.m.
Shade Tree Commission will meet on Tuesday, November 25th, at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers. Planning Commission will meet Monday, November 10th, at 7:00 p.m. in council chambers. Cemetery Board, council member Yurcheck.
Cemetery Board will next meet on Wednesday, November 19th, at 5:00 p.m. in council chambers.
Very good. Cable TV Commission, council member Copley.
Cable TV Commission will meet Thursday, December 4th, at 4:00 p.m. here in council chambers.
Very good. Senior Citizens Commission, council member Parrish.
Thank you, Mr. President. The Senior Citizens Committee will meet Monday, December 1st, at 3:30 at the Supreme Center.
Will the clerk please read the legislation for tonight?
Okay, let's start with our first readings this evening. We have ordinance number 25-189 on, actually, I have three ordinances, 25 through 189 through 25-191. They're all annual housekeeping legislation on first reading. They were discussed, a committee of the whole, and at council's request, I'm going to read the three ordinances straight through, and council will act on them as a group. Ordinance number 25-189, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2025 stormwater improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 25-190, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of the issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2025 water improvements and declaring an emergency. Ordinance number 25-191, an ordinance providing for the issuance of a note in anticipation of issuance of bonds for the purpose of financing the 2025 sanitary sewer improvements and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-189, 25-190, and 25-191 to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinances 25-189, 25-190, 25-191 have been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-192 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discussed at committee of the whole, in order to authorize a drawing of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $3,125 for the payment of the amount due upon a contract with Jay's Glass Service LLC and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-192.
Second.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Hines. Oops, sorry. Renee C.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.
And Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. President, I called a question on ordinance number 25-192.
Hearing no objection to council member Rosberg's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-192?
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.
Parrish.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-192 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-193 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discussed at committee of the whole, in order to authorize a drawing of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $8,088.86 for the payment of the amount due upon a contract with Quality Control Inspection Incorporated and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-193.
Second.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.
Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. President, I called a question on ordinance number 25-193.
Hearing no objection to council member Rosberg's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-193?
Copley.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Parrish.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
And Rosberg.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-193 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-194 on first reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discussed at committee of the whole, in order to authorize a drawing of a warrant in an amount not to exceed $10,000 for the payment of the amount due upon a contract with Selective Deductible Recovery Group and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-194.
Second.
Renee C.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.
Parrish.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Mr. President, I called a question on ordinance number 25-194.
Hearing no objection to council member Rosberg's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-194?
Parrish.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-194 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-195 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish, and discussed at committee of the whole, in ordinance making appropriations for current expenses and other expenditures of the city of Wadsworth during the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2026, establishing a new system of funds and accounts and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance 25-195 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-195 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-196 on first reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at committee of the whole, in order to make a supplemental appropriation of $39,612.20 in the 110 general fund to pay for inspection services for the fiscal year ending December 3rd, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-196.
Second.
Second.
Copley.
Yes.
Parrish.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Mr. President, I called a question on ordinance number 25-196.
Hearing no objection to council member Stugmeyer's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-196?
Copley.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
And Parrish.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-196 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-197 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish, and discussed at committee of the whole, in ordinance authorizing expenditures for gift cards to be presented at the annual employee recognition event to the city employees who in 2025 reached service milestones of 5, 10, 15, 20, 25, 30, 35, and 40 years of service and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we suspend the three reading rule on ordinance number 25-197.
Second.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.
And Parrish.
Yes.
Mr. President, I called a question on ordinance number 25-197.
Hearing no objection to council member Parrish's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number 25-197?
Copley.
Yes.
Rosberg.
Yes.
Renee C.
Yes.
Parrish.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
Yes.
Yurcheck.
Yes.
Ordinance number 25-197 has been adopted.
Ordinance number 25-198 on first reading sponsored by council member John Yurcheck, and discussed at committee of the whole, in order to amend section 35.41 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to change the compensation rate for the volunteer fire service and EMS service employees and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-198 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Aye, abstain.
Ordinance number 25-198 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance 25-199 on first reading sponsored by council member Jim Renee C, discussed at committee of the whole, in ordinance to amend sections 35.47 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to change the compensation schedule for various city officers and employees and to provide a 3% wage increase for said various city officers and employees in calendar year 2026 and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move we, move ordinance number 25-199 to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-199 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-200 on first reading sponsored by council member David Parrish, and discussed at committee of the whole, in ordinance authorizing the director of public service to enter into a contract with structured personnel incorporated for the leasing of employees from said employment agencies, to be responsible for the seasonal flushing of hydrants, the seasonal collection of yard waste, and leaves, and other needs, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-200 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-200 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-201 on first reading sponsored by council member Tom Stugmeyer, discussed at committee of the whole, in order to amend sections 35.43 of the codified ordinances of the city of Wadsworth to compensate the playback technician at $19 per hour and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to move ordinance number 25-201 to second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-201 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-202 on first reading sponsored by council member Jim Renee C, and discussed at committee of the whole, in order to make a supplemental appropriation of $772,648 in various funds for personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-202 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-202 has been placed on second reading.
Ordinance number 25-203 on first reading sponsored by council member Jim Renee C, and discussed at committee of the whole, in order to authorize in advance for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-203 on second reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-203 has been placed on second reading.
And we'll move to our second readings. We have resolution number 25-10 on second reading sponsored by council member Jim Renee C, and discuss at committee of the whole, a resolution authorizing the city administration to prepare and file all necessary documents with the county board of elections to place a park levy on the ballot at the next primary election and declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place resolution number 25-10 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Resolution number 25-10 has been placed on third reading.
Resolution number 25-11 on second reading sponsored by council member Jim Renee C, discussed at committee of the whole, a resolution requesting that the city administration begin the process of rolling back the city's provision of cable, internet, and fiber services and to cease further expansion of such services and declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place resolution number 25-11 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Opposed.
What was that?
Mr. Stugmeyer and Mr. Yurcheck.
Resolution number 25-11 moves to third reading.
Ordinance number 25-178 on second reading sponsored by council member John Yurcheck, discuss the economic development and planning, and ordinance authorizing the execution of a development and tax increment financing agreement with Addison Wadsworth LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move that we place ordinance number 25-178 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-178 has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number 25-179 on second reading sponsored by council member John Yurcheck, discuss the economic development planning, and ordinance authorizing the appointment of the Wadsworth Community Improvement Corporation, WCIC, as the agent for the city of Wadsworth for selling parcel 040-20A17-060, consisting of land located off North Party Street, and ratifying the methodology for the sale and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to amend ordinance number 25-179 to extend the permitted time for the purchaser to repair or improve the parking lot to industry standards from 12 to 24 months from the date of convenience.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-179 has been amended.
Mr. President, I move to place amended ordinance number 25-179 on third reading.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Amendment ordinance number 25-179 has been placed on third reading.
Ordinance number 25-180 on second reading sponsored by council member John Yurcheck, discuss the economic development and planning, and ordinance authorizing the mayor to enter into a community reinvestment area agreement with KCA Real Estate LLC and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I move, I make a motion to remove ordinance number 25-180 from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-180 has been removed, removed.
Ordinance number 25-181 on second reading sponsored by council member John Yurcheck, discuss the economic development and planning, and ordinance approving the execution of a job creation grant program agreement with Strat and Lamp Lumber Company, consistent with the guidelines attached to ordinance 20-095, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to remove ordinance number 25-181 from the agenda.
Second. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-181 has been removed.
Ordinance number 25-182 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discuss the public ways, in order to make a supplemental appropriation of $2,136,017 in the 110 general fund for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and declaring an emergency.
Mr. President, I make a motion to remove ordinance number 25-182 from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-182 has been removed.
Ordinance number 25-183 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discuss the public ways, in order to authorize transfer of $2,136,017 to provide funds for the remediation of land owned by the city of Wadsworth for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to remove ordinance number 25-183 from the agenda.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Ordinance number 25-183 has been removed.
Ordinance number 25-184 on second reading sponsored by council member Dan Rosberg, discuss the public ways, in order to make a supplemental appropriation of $2,136,017 in the 425 general capital improvement fund for purposes other than personal services for the fiscal year ending December 31st, 2025, and to declare an emergency.
Mr. President, I move to place ordinance number 25-184 on third reading.
Ordinance number 25-184 has been placed on.
I didn't take.
Oh, excuse me.
All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay.
Ordinance number 25-184 has been placed on third reading.
Resolution number 25-06 on third reading, sponsored by, or cosponsored by council member Ralph Copley, Jim Renee C., and David Parrish, and discuss at committee of the whole, a resolution establishing the policy of the council of the city of Wadsworth, Ohio, to limit the approval of borrowing to critical infrastructure and safety and security needs.
Mr. President, I call the question on resolution number 25-06.
Hearing no objection to council member Copley's proposal to call the question, will the clerk please take a roll call vote on the adoption of ordinance number, or resolution number 25-06?
Renee C.
Yes.
Stugmeyer.
No.
Parrish.
Yes.
Copley.
Yes.